To the flag of the United States of America, to your Republic which stands one nation for God, municipal, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're really pleased that you're all here this evening. Kay, would you please call a roll?
Ossbacher.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Hollenbaum.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on October 7th, 2019, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? See, none. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay is their correspondence this evening.
Yes, I distributed to you prior to the meeting, then also you received it in the email on Friday. Mayor Edwards is requesting confirmation of the following appointment to the Wood County Transportation Improvement District. It's Joe Fawcett for a two-year term ending 5/31/21, and that requires your approval.
Thank you, Kay. Is there a motion to approve the board and commission appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The appointment is approved as presented.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. I'm not aware that we have any special recognition this evening, so we will move on to lobby visitation. Kay, who has signed up lobby?
Ben Ottley.
Mr. Ottley. Please state your name and address for our record, please.
Ben Ottley, 1624 Oakwood Court here in BG. On behalf of the Bowling Green citizens in support of our schools, just wanted to come tonight to thank the council for your resolution at the last meeting in support of our issue, recognizing the importance of this issue to this community, and particularly the economic development impact it will have. So, thank you, on behalf of the committee.
Thank you, Ben. We appreciate your efforts. Is that all we have, Kay?
That is it.
Great. Let's move on to the introduction of new legislation, please.
From the Parks and Recreation Committee, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring financial assistance from the Clean Ohio Conservation Program Fund.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
From the Finance, Ways, and Means Committee, I have a resolution transferring previously appropriated funds, resolution authorizing the sale of obsolete or unfit municipally-owned personal property which is not needed for public use by Internet auction, and authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a contract with Gov. Deals Incorporated for ongoing Internet auctions for calendar year 2020, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019, ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.04 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relative to pay scales for seasonal employees.
Thank you, Bruce. I have several ordinances from the Public Utility Committee. An ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into an agreement or agreements with AMP Transmission LLC to provide a fourth transmission interconnection, an ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into an agreement with AMP Incorporated for the renewal of the Efficiency Smart Program, an ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into and complete a property purchase agreement with Ross Family Farms Limited, and finally, an ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for supplying annual inventory requirements, underground and overhead lines insurance, sale of scrap materials, and participation in the AMP joint purchasing program in 2020.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hollenbaum.
I have a resolution from the Community Improvement Committee. Let me make sure I got this right. Let's see. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to enter into a programmatic agreement between the city of Bowling Green and the State Historic Preservation Office, formerly known as the Ohio Historic Preservation Office, for the administration of activities funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Ohio Department of Services Agency, formerly known as the Ohio Department of Development.
Thank you, Mark. We move now to our official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council, and all assembled. We do have some special guests with us this evening, students from copy editing class, right? You want to put your hands up there, copy editing. Are you having fun?
That's early.
How are you getting along with your instructor, Jan Larson-McLaughlin, sitting back there? Oh, way to go. You're learning already. Way to go. Just a quick word of congratulations again to all the folks that were involved with Firefly Nights, again, especially the four women that have been the driving force behind the success of this whole program. I'm so pleased that they're going to be honorary parade marshals for our holiday parade, and so I hope I'm not letting any cat out of the bag or something there, but I think it's generally known, but Sandy, obviously you didn't know, but I'm thrilled, and I know you all are too, because they really deserving of this kind of recognition. So that adds to that very special occasion that we all look forward to. And I wasn't able to get involved much on Friday night because there were so many events going on, including a high school football game and various things at the university, but I understand it was another very successful venture, and of course, the weather cooperated there for the most part, too. So that was, congratulations again to all of the organizers and all the volunteers that really have made that program such a success. And now we can look forward to next year and another year of activities and Firefly Nights. I just want to remind you that I'm going to pass this on, but this Wednesday, October 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Wood County District Public Library in the first floor meeting room, the public will have a chance to weigh in and offer some opinions on the sculpture possibilities for the Worcester Green. This has been quite a process headed up by Lori Young, and others have been involved with her in this, representing the steering committee of the Worcester Green. I'll just pass this on here, but it will be from 6:00 to 8:00. We're down to three artists have been selected, and they've been working away on their proposals. Their proposals will be presented for public viewing this Wednesday, as I said, the 23rd. And so if you encourage everyone and anyone to attend, it should be a very interesting process here, and we hope then to have a decision made by the steering committee by November 6th. So it's a very exciting time, and we have, again, three really truly outstanding artists have submitted proposals for consideration there and for public viewing. So, Mr. President, members of council, that concludes my report. If you have any questions of me, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Are there questions for Mayor Edwards? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening. Starting with some kind of disappointing news here at the city, that our city engineer, Mike Trinity, has resigned to pursue another opportunity. Mike has been an outstanding city engineer, having first taken the position in the midst of numerous very large projects that we've had ongoing this last year. We wish him well with all of his future endeavors, and we will begin advertising for the open position this week. Because it's been mentioned numerous times in the planning of our downtown project, I wanted to give you an update about the intersection of Main and Worcester. As you may recall, the Heritage 2000 project included the installation of a large brick area in the intersection. When it opened, it was a beautiful addition to the character of downtown Bowling Green. However, over the years, as traffic movements occurred, the bricks became loose. The city tried on numerous occasions to better secure the bricks. Each effort would yield a few years of improvement, but eventually the problems would return. The intersection finally reached a point where it was a safety matter, and the decision was made to remove the bricks. Knowing at the time that it was removed that we had a large project coming in 2019, which at the time was several years away, it was determined to incorporate a brick design with the 2019 project, the one that's ongoing right now. When the project was designed, we asked the engineers to design a brick intersection, but with the caveat that our previous design did not have the longevity we wanted, so a solution would need to be found. The design submitted to us seemed great. It had concrete bands that would surround brick areas, creating reduced opportunity for movement and friction. We signed on, and the design was bid as part of the project. Over the summer, the contractor on the road portion of the project brought to our attention some concerns about that brick design that was to be installed. He shared that he had installed a similar project, and it wasn't wearing well, with the bricks already turning and breaking, much what we had experienced with our previous design. We sent staff to examine the intersection, and they shared the same conclusion. It turns out the intersection is fairly similar to the one in Bowling Green, and had only been in place for nine months. While we hated to go back on our word to put bricks back in at that intersection, we also took the responsibility for spending taxpayer dollars appropriately, and determined that the brick plan should not move forward. A silver lining to this decision is that the two-week closure that was to occur at the Main and Worcester intersection will not occur this year. We know that there is a lot of construction fatigue in the downtown, so we hope that this is a small respite for them. And of course, there is also a cost savings with not installing brick pavers. Still dedicated to the appearance of our downtown, we explored other options, including stamped concrete. However, as we were exploring these options and considering the status of the project, it was known that the earliest the concrete could be installed was mid-October, about this time. The contractor warned us that installing that large of an area of concrete that late in the year was not ideal. The concrete would not have adequate time to cure, and once salt was placed on it, the potential for spalling would be high. And we did contemplate not putting salt at that intersection, but also decided that that would be a safety matter as well. So it was decided not to perform any work in the fall, and to continue to explore other options, and to explore our options. Of course, the intersection will be paved, and it will be striped. We will put the crosswalks on there. Please note that throughout this process, we have continued to keep the downtown Bowling Green board updated. As a final note, I am pleased to report that paving and striping are scheduled very soon for the downtown area. That completes my report, subject to your questions.
Are there questions for Lori?
Well, just a quick comment. I've certainly thought about that intersection for quite a while. I never really decided if I thought it was worth it or not to put the bricks back in, but I still don't even have an opinion on that, but I appreciate the fact that you thought it through carefully, and you listened to the advice of contractors, and looked at other locations. So I think your process was excellent, so I'm satisfied with the conclusion.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Lori. Planning Director, Ms. Tretter. Are there questions for Heather? Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Good evening. Speaking of closures and paving, something I don't normally talk about, that is the bulk of my report. So my media friends in the back, there'll be a press release tomorrow morning, but City Park will be closed to vehicular traffic beginning this coming Monday, the 28th, through approximately Friday. It could be open sooner, but they will have it open for the weekend. So they're to that part in the project, where the front section of the park, and then obviously where the building is and those parking areas, will be paved, so they can't have vehicles on there. The park itself, in the back section, will be open. People will just have to walk in, and obviously avoid the areas where they're paving. So our staff is going to work around that, and we ask everybody to be patient, but it's super exciting that we're to that point, and so we will get the word out about that this week, and hopefully weather will cooperate, and then you get done as quickly as possible. So that is all that I have, subject to your questions.
Are there questions for Kristen?
Thanks.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell. Questions for Brian.
I have one. Brian, with the legislation being introduced tonight with the fourth transmission line, is there any way that we can either put it in a contract or make it be known that our preference is for the primary route and not the secondary route?
I think you're referring to two different projects, which I think what you're referring to is the proposed transmission line from First Energy or ATSI, where they're going to extend a 138 KV line from just to the north, maybe just east of the Village of Haskins, would come south, and it would tie into their existing substation at the northwest corner of Raven Bishop. So they have one line that comes in there now that feeds that substation. They have proposed a second feed into that substation. They have a preferred route that would go, out of that substation would go to the west and then north. They have an alternate route that would go to the east and then north. So they've proposed both options. I believe they are looking at the preferred route, which would come from the, go to the west of the substation. So that would not be applicable to this contract.
Is that something that we, as a city, can state a preference for, or is that...
We have, and we did, as well as AMP Transmission helped us to formulate a response that our preference was that they go to the west as their preferred route. We saw that if they would go to the east, we have transmission and distribution lines that go to the east on Bishop Road, and we did not really want to see potential impacts with our system and a proposed line they would run. But we did respond back when they were asking for questions and for input, that our preference would be that they go to the west, and that's where they've, it seems to be the direction that they're headed.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Sure. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
I do have one question. With regard to repairing the curbs and putting the bricks back in uptown, when I was walking around this weekend, and some other people have brought up to me, in some places, the bricks don't seem to be set level. Some places, they're lower than they should be. Some places, they're higher than they should be. Is there a settling process that they undergo, or...
Well, those are sitting on about three to four inches of concrete, and then about inch, three quarters of sand. Then he'll use a plate to tamp those down. Usually, we want to leave them just a little high, because over time, they will start to settle, because the sand kind of starts to bleed out a little bit. But we can take a, if you can email me maybe a better location, we can take a look at it. But what I've seen so far looks fairly level. I know he's had to cut a few bricks.
There are some places where it dips down. So I'll, if I can find time to wander around downtown.
We'll take a look, too, as well.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Yeah, they should be level with the concrete, just a little, just a fuzz higher.
I just want to make sure we're getting a quality product.
Good. The same guy putting them in today that did it 20 years ago.
All right.
Well, experience.
Yes.
Experience is good.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you all. We do appreciate those reports. Do we have council committee reports this evening?
Well, just, we had the Finance Committee meeting to discuss some housing options. Sort of an ongoing process of ensuring that we have safe and good housing. Probably most people heard it, so I don't have any other comments.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. President, this isn't really a committee report, but it's possibly related to the Finance Committee, and that is, one of the advantages of knocking on thousands of doors is every once in a while, actually quite frequently, a citizen has a suggestion that's worthy of discussion. And the other day, there was a citizen that was talking about their concern about the businesses in the downtown area, which of course is a number of citizens are concerned about. And they suggested that as a way to provide additional assistance to the downtown businesses, that we consider extending the free parking past the holiday season into the winter, maybe the first three months or so. And I think that that is something worthy of consideration, and I wanted to bring it up, figuring that perhaps you may want to assign it to a committee. That's up to you, of course. But the idea of extending it, you know, the immediate impact would be, of course, the same kind of impact we've had by having the free parking now, and that is a delay in the fees that we would get from that, which means a delay in some of the improvements that we would make. But the idea of balancing the improvements to the downtown parking with the viability of the downtown businesses might be a good trade-off. So I would humbly submit for consideration the idea of extending the free parking, not the other restrictions, but the free meter parking until the end of March, or sometime like that.
Well, thank you for that suggestion. I will discuss that with the mayor and Ms. Tretter, and Brian Bishong. I will tell you that my immediate response is to, of course, remind you, I don't need to, but we have extended, or we did create the parking holiday quite early.
Yes, yes.
In an effort to, you know, assist and hopefully minimize impact of construction on downtown businesses. And we're happy to, I think we're all happy to have done that, and I think that it was reasonable that we did do that. Having said all of that, I think that Brian Bishong will confirm to me when we have this discussion that in doing so, we've created considerable stress on our parking fund. So we're going to have to really take that under advisement, and I will just say I'm skeptical that we will, from a financial position, be able to do that, but certainly your suggestion is appreciated, and I will pursue the discussion.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other council committee reports?
Mr. President, I don't really have a report, but I just wanted to respond a little bit to the Financial Committee meeting tonight. I'm really glad that we had a good public discussion about the issue and where we're at at this point. The discussion raised a lot of questions in my mind and things that, you know, I look forward to discussing again with, as a group. So, you know, I just wanted to say, appreciated the comments tonight, but I think we clearly need additional meetings and steps on this issue, and I'm just looking forward to those future meetings.
Absolutely, Jan. Bruce and I talked about that at length, about the fact that the meeting that we did have today, you know, we recognize as a first step, and what we expect will be a lengthy discussion involving all of council, because certainly we're aware that, you know, you and other council members have strong feelings about those issues, and it would only be fair and legitimate that we would engage everybody in that process. So it's just a very, very first step.
Thank you, Mike.
Sure. Additional council committee reports. Very good. Kay, would you please lead us through the reading of legislation?
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3744 for first reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we suspend the rules for the shortest resolution in the history of Bowling Green and give it its second and third readings.
Second. It moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call a roll?
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaum.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Ossbacher.
Yes. Motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3744.
Resolution number 3744 for second and third reading. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt Resolution 3744.
Second. It moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, back when we had our discussion about adjusting the parking in the downtown area principally, council member Roland brought up a very good point that we should revisit this at some point in the future. And I have a concern in that spirit that this transfer of previously appropriated funds does fund kiosks that would be beyond Parking Lot 2. And I myself, I know it might be a little late in the process, but I myself would feel more comfortable if we re-engaged with having a community discussion about expanding the kiosks beyond Parking Lot 2. Some of the feedback that I've gotten is kind of a reluctance, well, a reluctance for using Parking Lot 2, and the mix that I've envisioned, right or wrong, the mix that I've envisioned is that we have some area, Parking Lot 2, with kiosks, and we wait until sometime in the future, when people have had a chance to be acclimated to the kiosks, to expand them beyond Parking Lot 2. I don't, you know, the vibe that I'm getting from citizens is they're not real comfortable with it. Of course, it's related to the citizens that I talked to, but I think it would be prudent, if possible, to not purchase the additional kiosks at this point, and it may be that that's too late, and just have time for the new kiosks to take effect, and see how people respond to the new kiosks, and then re-engage with the community to determine to what extent they wish to have the mix of kiosks and non-kiosks. So that's my two cents worth.
I appreciate that. I'd be interested to hear perception of other council members, but it was my perception that when we went through what I thought was a pretty extensive process of reviewing parking in Bowling Green, there was quite a bit of discussion about kiosks, and it was my impression that at the end of that process, when we raised the parking rate, we did so knowing that with all of the financial aspects involved in that process, that raising that rate was also going to lead to us transitioning to kiosks in order to minimize enforcement costs, so that we could maintain the viable financial structure of that whole thing. So, again, I'm anxious to, I would be curious to hear if any other council members have any different recollections, but I was not surprised to see this expenditure. I guess that's what I was expecting that we would do, that we would purchase them as a lot, and that we would get them installed and put them in place after the first of the year, was my intent.
Mr. Chairman, my recollection was not exactly the same. I do recall that before we took the vote, I said, you know, it's okay to go along with what we're doing temporarily, but we have to revisit this again. This is still not satisfactory as far as parking and businesses in Bowling Green are concerned. And I'm looking at it from the business owners from downtown, and that's always been my concern. No one has complained about paying another quarter if they have to, but I am very, very concerned that the businesses feel that we are a step behind those communities who don't charge for parking, and they also have said over and over and over to me, the kiosks terrify people, and they want to stay away from them as much as they possibly can. I have yet to run into five people who like the kiosks. I really, truly can say that. I think that if we all look back and remember what was talked about regarding the kiosks, they were not a hit in the city of Bowling Green. kiosks, they, they were not a hit in the city of Bowling Green. I think our parking problems are much more beyond what we considered last summer. I think last summer was a very temporary thing. I am all for delaying the purchase of, of kiosks, and I am all for satisfying Brian by coming up with another way to cover the cost of paving our parking lots. So I would like to just pause and say, let's talk about this again. I want to add also, I really, in my heart, believe that council, as a body, had very little to say about this. I think there was a committee of business people and council representation, but council sat back quietly and had no interaction with the businesses and the other players in this. So I feel that we haven't been able to adequately represent the people of Bowling Green until all of council has, has really thoroughly looked into this. And I acknowledge our parking problems are much bigger than just kiosks and so on, but I think we just haven't done our job yet.
Well, my recollection, having served on the committee that dealt with that, is that the vast majority, the business people that contributed to the discussion, considered a couple of different options. One, which would have been the, where all the, where the customer doesn't have to pay anything. It's, I hate to say free parking, because it meant that the businesses would have to have paid for that. Many of them thought that it would not be an exorbitant amount, but then, as the discussion proceeded, it was, it turned out to be quite a bit of variability, depending on the nature and location of the business. But my, my main point is that the, the business people that have the most interest in this question, at the end of those discussions, they were satisfied with the plan that we came up with. So this seems like, now that we're ready to move forward with the financing of the plan, that everybody agreed with, it seems, it seems like this is, I, I don't know why we would suddenly get cold feet on this and change. And I understand, too, that there's some people that are a little bit nervous about using kiosks. And so we spent a lot of time looking at improved kiosks that, they, they won't be perfect for everybody, but they will be a lot better than the, the old kiosks. So I, I, we put a lot of thought into it. I thought, and as far as your point, that council didn't have much input on that, I don't really remember exactly the nature of how we discussed that at our meetings, but...
It was a small committee of downtown businesses, business owners, building owners.
Yeah, but then, but then after those meetings and discussions were held, you know, did we not have the opportunity to discuss all this fairly thoroughly?
I left with saying, we have to look at this again. This is a temporary thing. And I do remember saying that.
I remember concurring with you. For some reason, that's memorable, and...
Concurrence with Sandy.
No, we're buds. Anyway, my, my recollection, and being 65, I have to preface everything with, I'm 65, so my recollection is that there was quite, quite a bit of attention paid to the amount per hour, doubling it, and there's a lot of attention, as should be. There was attention also paid to making the handicap not have a charge, which is a positive thing, keeping the parking, at least at this point, on Main Street without a charge. And there was discussion, in fact, I remember going to the meeting where they showed the new improved kiosk, and my impression of that was, well, okay, it's a step in the right direction. Let's equip lot two with the new kiosks and then see how that goes. And so it could be, I, again, I acknowledge that maybe this was the type of thing that was also as part of the discussion. My focus was, right or wrong, on, okay, get the new kiosks in, and we had, we had toyed with other things like automatic recognition of the license plates as they go in and out of the lot and all, some really cool stuff. But we settled in on the new kiosks, which were more user-friendly. And for me, it was like, all right, lot two's already kiosked, that's a word, let's, let's see how that goes before we expand it beyond lot two. And I think regardless of whether that was the intent of the study back earlier, I think it's a prudent course of action now, so that we can get some added information. And, and also, again, and I'm echoing what Sandy said, the, the feedback I get is people are actually avoiding lot two so that they don't have to deal with the kiosks. Now, that's primarily their experience with the, the first version of the kiosks. Maybe that will change, and maybe it's the type of thing that just takes an educational effort and should be phased in, but phased in. So that's, that's the motivation for my bringing it up. And I think that it would be being responsive to the, the citizens to re-engage this question after having the, the added information of, of the new kiosks and how that goes. I don't think you get many, many complaints about the new kiosks right now, because, well, parking's free.
I just think the discussion was thorough, and I'm satisfied that we had lots of input, and we had lots of good thought that went into it, so I'd, I'd hate to see us stop it in, in midstream here. I'd like to go forward with this.
Well, I want to thank Bill for bringing up the caution. I have to admit, I thought these were for a lot too, so, you know, my, my bad. But I, I, I remember Sandy's comment at the time that this needed more study and her concerns. I, I know the kiosks that we had were, were universally viewed by the business folks there as a, a real detriment, and it's hard for me to imagine in advance that the improved kiosk is going to be a totally different experience for, for people and those businesses. So I'm going to agree with our caution, going with caution on, on this.
Well, I think, like, the way you proceed with this piece of legislation that we have on the table, we have multiple transfers out of multiple different funds on this. Can we go ahead and process this legislation, but then ask you to hold off on the purchase of the kiosks? Because I think that we still need to accomplish the transfer related to fire department training, which is lumped in the same legislation. Well, I mean, we, we can just go ahead and approve this, and that doesn't mean that those purchases need to occur right away. It just means that in the event that we decide to go ahead with it in the future, the money is available.
We would still get to vote on it when we make that, because of the amount, correct? We would still be voting on it if they were purchased later? No? Okay.
Well, I would move that we just go ahead and approve the transfers, and then ask that they hold off on purchasing the new kiosk equipment until we've had a chance to talk about it more.
I'd like it before it's seconded.
No, it's already been...
We already have a motion on the floor to...
But we can amend.
No, it's already been moved and seconded. So we need to...
Either have an amendment or vote on it.
Well, we need to, we need to deal with the motion that's on the table. We can do that. We can either approve it, or we can reject it. If we reject it, we could later amend it by substitution to remove the portion that is dedicated for funding of the kiosk. Am I correct, Mike?
The time to amend is now, if we're going to amend it.
I thought this was a good time to amend, even though it's been seconded.
Well, that, we couldn't amend it till it was seconded.
Yeah.
It's, it's already been moved and seconded. We, we can't amend, there's a motion on the table.
Yeah, actually, you can amend it. It supersedes. Am I, am I right?
You can make an...
Okay.
Yeah. Well, what I was going to say is I would like to amend it and just take out about the kiosks and, and take a look at talking about these kiosks first, and then take action on that later.
So you'd have to recognize Sandy's motion.
Okay, so is there, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
To remove those seven items.
To remove, remove the kiosk.
Wrong. Eight mine items.
Yes.
Just keep the first two with the fire.
Keep the first two or remove the...
Okay.
All after that.
I'll, I'll second, just to move it along.
Okay, so just to clarify, we are voting on the resolution transferring the previously appropriated funds that has been amended to remove the funding that's identified for the parking items related to, well, basically, all of the parking items, eight items.
Yeah.
So we don't vote to amend first?
Yeah.
We do. That's what we're voting. Okay, I didn't think you mean that.
Yes.
Okay.
We're voting to amend the legislation. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Hollenbaugh?
Uh, no.
Jeffers?
No.
Robinette?
No.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
No.
And Harold?
Uh, yes.
Motion's defeated.
Motion is defeated, so now we revert...
To the motion that's on the floor to adopt.
Back to the original motion for the original transfer previously associated funding that does include the funding for the kiosk. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
No.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes, with a proviso that was stated earlier.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
And my vote was with the proviso.
Okay, the motion, which was previously referred to as the shortest... [laughter] Bowling Green City Council is approved.
Have a good job with that one.
Thank you. That's resolution 3744.
You jinxed it.
Resolution number 3745 for first reading, resolution authorizing the sale of obsolete or unfit municipally-owned personal property which is not needed for public use by internet auction, and authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a contract with GovDeals Incorporated for ongoing internet auctions for calendar year 2020. Resolution number 3746 for first reading, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring financial assistance from the Clean Ohio Conservation Program Fund.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Roland.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance, or give resolution 3746 its second and third reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The rules are suspended for resolution 3746.
Resolution number 3746 for second and third reading, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring financial system assistance from the Clean Ohio Conservation Program Fund.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Roland.
I move to adopt resolution 3746.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution 3746 is adopted.
Resolution number 3747 for first reading, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to enter into a programmatic agreement between the city of Bowling Green and the State Historic Preservation Office, formerly known as Ohio Historic Preservation Office, for the administration of activities funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Ohio Development Services Agency, formerly known as Ohio Department of Development. Ordinance number 8802 for first reading, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers?
I move we give ordinance 8802 its second and third readings.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 8802 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8803 for first reading, ordinance amending and adopting section 33.04 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, relative to pay scales for seasonal employees. Ordinance number 8804 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into an agreement or agreements with AMP Transmission LLC to provide a fourth transmission interconnection. Ordinance number 8805 for first reading, ordinance authorizing utilities director to enter into an agreement with AMP Inc. for the renewal of the Efficiency Smart Program. Ordinance number 8806 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into a complete, enter into and complete a property purchase agreement with Ross Family Farms Limited. Ordinance number 8807 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for supplying annual inventory requirements, underground and overhead lines insurance, sale of scrap materials, and participation in the AMP joint purchasing program in 2020. Legislation for second reading, ordinance number 8800 for second reading, ordinance amending and adopting section 33.23B and E of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, regarding medical, dental, and vision insurance. Ordinance number 8801 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to execute an assignment and assumption agreement and other documents related to the transfer, purchase of property from Black Swamp Conservancy.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Roland.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 8801, third reading.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Chairman?
Um, I need to read it first.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Ordinance number 8801 for third reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to execute an assignment and assumption agreement and other documents related to the transfer, purchase of property from Black Swamp Conservancy.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Roland.
Now, I move for adoption of ordinance 8801.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8801 is adopted.
Legislation for third reading, resolution number 3742 for third reading, resolution authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a renewal of the agreement with the Wood County Public Defender.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers?
I move we adopt resolution 3742.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution 3742 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8797 for third reading, ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio for in-lot number 2801 and in-lot number 2802, generally located at the northwest corner of North Enterprise Street and Frazee Avenue, from M2 General Industrial to R2 Single Family Residential Zoning as petitioned for by Maur Rentals LLC.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt ordinance 8797.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8797 is adopted. That completes the items on our agendas. Are there any other business to come before council this evening? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.